My name is Raymond Skinner. I'm Chair of the DCHA Stabilization and Reform. And I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the regular monthly meeting of the District of Columbia Housing Authority being held today, March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. This meeting is being held via WebEx video conferencing, and the board is here in person, and the time is one oh four P M. First, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence. Thank you. Today's meeting is our regular monthly meeting, and we have invited members of the public to sign up to speak via our website, or those who would just like to view the meeting can do so live via the DCHA web link to our Facebook Live page. The Board of Commissioners welcomes constituent inputs on matters of public concern and offers you today an opportunity to express your views during the public testimony portion of this meeting. However, we require that members of the public who attend our meetings to abide by certain rules of decorum to allow the board to complete its business. For this virtual meeting, DCHA asks that you remain muted until you are instructed to speak and that you do not use the chat to comment when it's not your turn to speak. Members of the public cannot engage in any disruptive conduct, loud threatening, or abusive language during the board meeting. This includes any loud outbursts or shouting in times when you have not been invited to speak. Anyone who violates these rules will be muted from the virtual meeting. Serious or repeated violations of the rules may result in your being barred from speaking at future board meetings. But we really appreciate your interest in the matters before us today, and I thank you in advance for abiding by these rules of conduct. At this time, I'd like to ask for roll call to determine if we have a quorum.
Sure. Denise Blackson.
Present.
Thank you. Rosa Burbidge, present. Lee Roy Clay.
Present.
Perfect. Jim Dickerson.
Present.
Ronnie Harris. Katrina Jones.
Here.
Melissa Lee.
Present.
Christopher Murphy.
Present.
Jennifer Reed. Teresa Sella.
Present.
And Chairman Raymond Skinner.
Present.
Perfect. You have a quorum, James.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to get commissioners to consider the minutes of the February fourteenth, two thousand and fourteen board meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, so let the minute stand as presented. So next, we're going to have the report of our executive director. Before that, let me just mention that after the director's report, we're going to have testimony. Since we only have a few people signed up today who are not residents, I'm going to add, I'm going to do the resident testimony followed directly by the testimony of non-residents. So anyone who's prepared to testify, make sure that you're ready because it's probably going to be sooner than you than you may have thought. Okay, with that, I'm going to ask our executive director to give his report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before I get started, I want to introduce Mr. Anton Shaw, ACVP Director. I know he was announced in the media alert, but this is his first board meeting. So I told him we're going to put him on the spot and make him feel uncomfortable. No, but we're glad he's on board. We're excited about him being here. So we dive into a couple of numbers. Obviously, my summary, I just tried to, we're still trying to play around with the format of the summary just to make sure that we get you guys the pertinent information that you all will want to hear and see as well as the public will want to hear. So some of this stuff, what do we pull out of the system? Some of these tables, they're there for right now, but we're still sort of trying to identify which numbers and which information we want to make sure we provide on a monthly basis that will provide you all with an understanding of our performance in terms of very critical areas, whether it be public housing, whether it be vouchers, obviously, some of the Medicare services activity with regard to contractors, and then voucher activity with regard to some of the things that we're doing. So obviously, we're moving along. If you look at property management, as of currently, as of yesterday, seventy-six point nine five percent is our lease-up. Obviously, the goal is to get to about eighty-five percent by the end of the year. And if we can exceed that, I'll really be excited. I'll talk a bit about that a little later with regard to how we plan to ramp it up even more than what we're doing now. So you scroll down, number of vacant units, which people always want to know about. You see it dropped from eighteen ninety-nine to sixteen eighty-nine, and that has a lot to do with a lot of units either being leased up and/or being pulled offline because of substantial rehab. So it's such a combination of things, so that caused that number to move. The waitlist numbers here in terms of applicants waiting. So we constantly pushing the lease-up activity.
And I stop you right there. So the, this is what, two thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine?
Right.
People on the waiting list?
Yeah.
So I know last year, we did this big, I'll call it purge
Yeah.
of the waiting list. There were like thirty thousand. So we went from thirty thousand, now down, we only have two thousand?
Yeah, when I, I got here, I asked the same question. But it appears that that's what happened, the purge, and we walked through it, HUD.
Right.
Because HUD asked some questions about that too as well. So they were satisfied. Staff explained how it happened, so we're just.
So the other thing is that we were told at some point that we were going to reopen the waiting list, have site-based waiting. So what's the timing for that?
So we're probably looking at April. It's probably no later than May.
April of two thousand and twenty-four?
Yeah, that's coming. We've tried to get some systems things in order, because when you do it, we need the system set up the right way.
Right.
Otherwise, you know.
What's that call-out?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Yes, and can we maybe prioritize that as an agenda topic for the Committee on Operations and Administration so that we can talk about that?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, so April to later than May, because we got to get going now, because we're going now, especially at that. So, so yes. On the voucher side of the house, so we have here that in the first two months, we provided a utilization table. And if you got members table, we sent the HUD several, several months ago. So we're just monitoring now our issuance of vouchers to try to keep track of what we projected the HUD that we would do in order to maintain the pace of China lease-up, increase our utilization on that side of the house. So you'll see the number of vouchers that were issued in January and February. We exceeded the February number, but we're still in that area of one hundred and fifty. We actually had one hundred and seventy-something that we didn't shoot over too much. So we're still on the pace there.
So I don't have the chart in front of me, but I just had made a note to myself. I said on the ACVP inspections that both the numbers don't add up. I'm going to do it to myself.
In the inspections? Well, I thought inspection, we only just gave what we were doing, right? In terms of.
The chart.
Yeah, it was more than less.
Yeah, so the chart that I have here in the summary table, we're just giving like numbers of questions and numbers completed, right? So you're saying somebody's math was wrong?
I'm saying, I made a note to myself that the numbers don't add up. So again, I don't have it in front of me right now, so.
Yeah, and I probably need to understand. You say the numbers don't add up. It's always showing is what the activity is.
Right.
So again, like here, in terms of initial inspections for federal vouchers, it was one fifty for the month of January, and one fifty-eight we're done in February.
Okay.
So it's not.
Were you referring, maybe was it in the back in the monthly? Because there were two things. We kind of got to toggle back and forth between the one up front. So I'm wondering if that's what you were thinking of.
Yeah, because all I'm doing is just, we're just showing the activity for each month, January, February. It wasn't more about adding them up to say, okay, hey, unless you're telling me that move outs gives you the totals
Yeah.
for both of those. And so it looks like something is here to be added up correctly, but what the.
What I remember being surprised is how many units failed. I was surprised how many units failed.
You know, we get a lot of complaints about passing units that shouldn't pass. So when I saw the failed number going up.
Better to deal with it on the front end.
Yes.
Are we talking about voucher inspections? Are we talking about?
Yeah, initial voucher.
Quite a few failed on the, on the biennials too, just so you know. And I would think that those would fail more only because of the people there. Like you would get a wear tear on it. So, but yeah, we just provide numbers. And again, as we move forward and as we try to finalize this format, you know, we continue to shape it. And if any questions that you all have, just let me know, and I'll circle back and make sure that we get direct response. We're just moving along with the numbers that we're doing. We haven't had many issues so far, believe it or not. But we are doing town halls for landlords as well as for residents, lease-up activity for residents as well. So those appear to be going over very well, especially with the lease-up side. But then also, we need to, we need to train landlords more. So I'm glad that we're now getting out and proactive about meeting with landlords and explaining to them the program and even running regismaness right away to show them where their unit will fall so that we don't fall into that trap, having to deal with it on the back end anymore. So we're just trying to be in front of everything. And so that we can calm some, some people and make sure that we're doing the right things.
How, how often are you doing the moves?
So every other month, every other month, yeah. But the lease-up activity happens. They've been well attended. How many, do we know? Haven't even seen the first one. I thought it was pretty close. Is Hammer, where's Hammer?
Yes, yes, hello. We had over a hundred register, but actually showed up was about half. So, but we still have their information, so we're sending them the information. We're also doing, excuse me, with some of our landlord associations, we're having, we're attending their meetings and providing some of that same information as well.
So quick question around the details related to rent reasonableness. What's in the report is about rent increases in the back of the report. Is there a way to itemize the number of just rent reasonable determinations that you are making as opposed to just calling out rent increases?
The chart should identify initials which are new move-ins and increases, as you said. So right now, those are the ones that rent reasonableness are run on. So a new move-in or if you're requesting rent. But again, we're reading rent reasonableness.
I, I guess I have the same question. It does sense. First off, I want to just thank you for all the data, because you're giving us so much more than we got, and it's helpful and it's great, so I'm not complaining. But I do wonder, does it make sense to break rent reasonableness out applicants and existing tenants?
Right.
Or you know what I mean?
Yeah, we could do that.
Because it seems, I, I mean.
But right now, so just to clarify, so new move-ins
Yeah.
meaning, could mean a transfer as well to a new unit.
Uh huh.
Rent reasonableness is run on them and rent reasonableness is run on someone, a landlord requesting an increase. That's all that's run on right now.
Okay, maybe that's why I'm sure.
It's capturing all reasonableness run.
But it's not capturing existing units where the landlord doesn't ask for a rent increase.
But we're doing it though.
Okay.
Going to that.
So, so over time, as you launch that, could you sort of break it out sort of into those categories? Because I'd forgotten about it, which I know is the main.
Because we have a HUD delivery by May thirty-first.
Right, yeah.
So we're in the process of doing it now, so we'll have it for you.
And maybe I'm looking in the wrong place, because when I'm looking at the details in the back, I only see, I, I don't see the new. I, yeah, I don't see the new folks that are moving in.
The new leases.
Yeah, and I guess this was, this was my comment around the data, is that I can't tell the difference between why are we having some numbers in the ED report and some in the monthly report to the board? I logically, in my mind at least, there's not a reason that we should have two things. You could convince me. You could say, this is why we're doing it this way. But right now, it's like, you read something in the report, ED's report, and you're like, oh, I didn't get my question answered. I hope it's in the monthly report to the board, and then you got to read that.
Right.
So maybe it makes sense to just have one document.
Yeah, my thought process has always been, for some reason, it's a summary, right? You have all the other information, but I didn't want to have to touch it all. I just wanted to touch on some of the highlights.
Yeah, I mean, the problem is the summary is so much more than a summary now. So it's like, it's sort of the worst of both worlds, since I always said instead of the best of both worlds.
Okay, all right. Well, listen, as even for me, format-wise anyway, you know.
I mean, which honestly, the first document, the first, the ED report could be much smaller. I mean, you, you could take a lot of information out of it and put it in the back, but.
And again, remember, this is a work in progress, but we're just trying to find a format that works. So I, listen, I have no problem reducing it.
Yeah, because right now it's eight pages, so that's, that's not really a summary in my mind.
But there are a lot of areas, though.
Oh, my God, the data is fantastic.
A lot of activity too. I'm starting to get a little better at it. Hopefully, some of this stuff will shrink, because we don't have that much report other than hopefully could, hopefully.
It's just data. No, it's all great.
Yeah, okay, all right. So there is a rent reasonableness section in the front.
Yes, that's why it gets confusing.
Okay, and so I'll look in there, but I, I see what you're saying. So in the chart right here, we're only capturing requested increases and not new movement. So we'll ensure that that's in this chart as well.
Yeah, and, and so the rent reasonableness certifications that are featured in your director's report, and I'm sorry for harping on this, is all of the rent reasonableness certifications. It doesn't speak to like new versus.
Right, they're combined, they're combined.
They're combined. And then the increases are like in the back.
I think it might help as you, as you launch the strategy to them all, I can understand why now why it's all together, but in the future.
We can break it up then. Break it up. With the audit is on schedule, right? Twenty-two audit, so. And then twenty-three, we're rocking and rolling? All right, you're the record now. On the HUD report, I think.
I'm sorry, so twenty-two was due the end of March, right?
Yeah, twenty-two, we have it, we have it ready for the subcommittee meeting. And then for you guys to hold our data paper. For the subcommittee meeting for having, for you guys to review.
Yes, and, and can I actually request that for our committee? Because the data that you're presenting and talking through really quickly here, like, really matters to me and my constituents. So for example, the breakdown of the bedroom sizes
Yes.
is something that's like really of interest to us. And understanding, you know, whether it's the LRSP vouchers or whether it's the public housing vouchers that are driving these different numbers is also really important from my perspective. And so I just wanted to flag that it would be helpful. I know we have an hour and a half allotted, so it would be helpful for our committee meeting to actually talk through the rent reasonableness and also the unit breakdowns, kind of category by category, step by step.
Okay.
Okay.
Let's be ready. And that's pretty much it for my report. Unless you have other questions, we're going to be presenting resolutions later. We go to, oh, I had to forget the lease-up. So as you all know, we're going to bring our staff back to work April first. We found a space in Chinatown, right across from the metro, seven oh two H Street. Two floors. We're going to talk a bit more about that later with the resolutions. But we're prepping the place. We're getting a lot of positive feedback about the fact that we're bringing people back to your office so residents can find us, see us, and touch us, and we can talk and hopefully improve our performance in terms of movements, particularly on the voucher side of the house, because that timeframe is too long, and we need to condense. And one way that I feel like to condense it is to have staff where residents can, and applicants can find them and have answer questions answered right then and there. So, and we got, we got some positive feedback yesterday at the meeting. I don't know if you saw, when they started clapping, when I said we moved back to come back to the office.
Yes, they did.
So it's a good thing, you know. So we're excited about that, and we're talking about the lease later, only get to the resolution. But outside of that, I was chairman.
Okay, any, any other questions from the board members?
I just had a small, sorry, I just had a small one. And I think Heather and I had, I know Heather and I had a good conversation yesterday about the procurement numbers related to urgent needs campaign. And so I think we've got a good plan going forward to how to get this, the information that we requested, kind of what, what we want to see on a regular basis. I think we're in good shape there. I just, and, and I think Heather was clear on this, but I want to just confirm it with you. At this point, I don't think you've had to use the flexibility around procurement that we approved as a board last month. You haven't had to use that authority yet to supplement an existing contract.
Yeah, I understand.
So there were a bunch of existing contracts
Right.
that we're working on urgent needs. You came to us and you said, I got to move faster. I don't have time for it to wait for you guys to approve if I need to supplement those contracts.
Right.
We agreed.
Right.
We said completely on board with that. We just want to have transparency and visibility into what you are doing. Not, not because we want to second guess you, but just want to be able to see it. Because this chart isn't quite there yet, it doesn't tell me, it doesn't give me the visibility that we want. And so all I'm trying to do is say, I don't think at this point you have had to use the flexibility that we gave you last month to either to, to supplement contracts beyond the amount that you would have previously had to seek board approval.
Certain, if I understand you, the answer is yes, we have not.
Okay.
But because now, remember now, we put out RFP to, 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 to to the next.
Right, and those we will have to approve.
Right.
Yes.
That's why we're here. That's the, that's the day.
Yes, yes, yes. That's, that's all good. And I think once we get this document straight, I'll never have to ask again.
He's on the record, right?
Yeah. Because the doc wasn't quite where we wanted it, I just wanted to make sure I was clear. Okay, great, thank you.
Miss, a question.
Yes.
And for clarity for the residents and people listening, when we do the new building, seven oh two H, they can do all the services that was provided at eleven thirty-three? Will they be able to walk in recertification notary just for the records? Thank you.
We got two floors. We even got security. That's ACVP side, yeah.
Okay.
Great.
Yes.
If there are no further questions for the executives, I can thank you for your report. You're hearing a lot of good things.
Look, I'm taking now because some of the arrows are going to come. I'll take all I get right there.
Okay, so next, we're going to move to public testimony. And we'll start with the residents. As I said earlier, we're going to do the resident test. We're going to go right into the non-resident public testimony. Each participant will have three minutes. Any issues that you have before the authority or, and also comment on resolutions that are in the public notice? Okay, we're going to start with.
I'm going to start with. Dejito. Maria Dejito. Okay, I'll move forward. Adrian Lynch. Adrian Lynch, and for the public, if you are on, remember, if you're muted, you have to dial star six to unmute yourself. Okay, I'll move forward. Paulette Matthews.
She's here.
Perfect. Go ahead, Ms. Matthews. You have three minutes.
Hi, Ms. Matthews.
How y'all all doing? I actually really don't have any issues. Well, I do, but they're being solved. Hopefully and faithfully, they'll work out, because I know everything is a process. I'm just right now on the call just to say that looks like things are changing for the better, and I hope that's across the board. I'm just going on what I'm seeing here where I am presently at Keller Miller. I feel as though if the housing authority gets what they need far, wise, and fast, you know, and get things in line when it comes to like materials and what we need in the order and have things on deck or on hand so that we don't have to wait a long period of time to get stuff. Because you know, when COVID came, it took a long time for parts and stuff to come back. And we don't know what could possibly happen in our future, but we already know what has happened in our past. So if we can all get together and make a positive difference for everybody, because everybody deserves a decent place to live, and I know everywhere we go, nothing is isolated, you know, the prices are high, the killing, the shooting, all of that. But we just all have to work together to make a better difference than what we have been seeing in the past. And that's all I want to say, because I'm going to let the process work out. I just hope that it doesn't take a long, long time, just like the development of having phones placed back on buried phones. Because I feel as though the process with the development, people say out their mouths all day long, you know, we're trying to hurry up and get you back. But we have realized and noticed that a lot of people don't make it back, and it's not because of choice. It's because God has took them on to a different level and that, you know, but this is what we got to do to make a difference, I feel. And if we all work together, I think we'll see a big difference. I'm done.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews.
Next, we have Martha Jones.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I just want to say that at the end of January, I called for a transfer briefing because my voter had expired to move. Up to now, I haven't heard from anyone. They said I was going to get an answer in five business days. I also tried to sign my grandson up for the youth summer program, and I'm still waiting on that head. So that's the two complaint I have. On December twelfth, twenty twenty-three, I was hijacked and my pocketbook was stolen. I called the police and they told me, oh, I explained to them I had a check in my pocketbook. They told me to go right now to the office, DCHA office. I went to the office in southeast, and I spoke to the security guard, and I explained to him what had happened. He went to the back and come back out and tell me, no one is here. I have to come back tomorrow. I was very distorted and upset, and I decided to call to file a complaint. I was referred to the Office of Audit and Compliance. I called and explained what happened, and Ms. Cooper sent an email on my behalf to finance. Had my check canceled, and I received a replacement check within two days. I want, I want to thank Ms. Cooper for making my issue a priority and guiding me through the process of getting a check replacement. I never met the executive director, but good leadership triggers down to the staff. So it is appropriate to say thank you to Mr. Pedigree, as well as DCHA may have its issue, but, but yeah, as people in who care as well, yes, people in the office who care as well. I am appealing to one of them to respond to my issue I raised earlier. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Shanta High. Shanta, hi. I'll move forward. Next, we have Nina Smith.
Yes, hi, this is Nina Smith. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead, Miss Smith.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
My issues that I've been having are, I would like to start looking for a new place. But the issue I'm facing is the rent reasonable that has five different amounts. And I don't know which one will be the correct house, the correct amount that housing will pay. Also, these properties say that they do accept the voucher, but the amount that they are asking for, housing is not going to pay. And I don't want to have to pay for all of these application fees knowing that housing isn't going to approve the rent amount. So how do I start looking when I don't have the minimum or maximum amount that I know that housing will pay? Thank you. Have a good day.
So we'll reach out to it.
Perfect. Thank you, Ms. Smith. We'll reach out to you.
Thank you.
Sure. We're going to move forward. Next, we have Patricia Bishop.
Good evening, everyone. Afternoon. Happy Women's Day to all, Women's Month to all the women. Director Pedigree, I just asked that you give me a call at your earliest convenience.
Yes, ma'am. I got you.
Okay, and I only have one concern. The contractors here leave a mess all day long. They need to have mop cleaning supply to mop every hall that they know they have tracked so that we won't have to keep mopping our floors when we are tracking that stuff in our units. That's all my concern is today. God bless everyone.
Bless you.
Thanks, Ms. Bishop. Next, we have Michelle Hamilton.
Hello.
Hi, Ms. Hamilton, you have three moments. Yep, we can hear you. Can you hear us?
Yes.
Perfect. Ms. Hamilton, you have three minutes.
Okay, um, I'm a former buried farm resident, and I do want to retire. But when I got this place, I've been to this, this place five times now. And we had a fire in our unit like last year. And before the fire, we had five tunnels within the building, and it's called the Big Speed. And I just want to, you know, give a shout out to Daniel and Power DC for helping me get these meetings with y'all, and Carlos Gray, he called and asked that I want to come to the senior business. And I told him. He called and asked if I want to come to the senior bit and I told him that my house has expanded. And when my mother died in the house last year, my husband died eight months after I moved in. So the house now, it has so much, so many roaches. And it was flooded and the man tried to kill his family in the building. He set the building on fire the week before. Then he set the building on fire and I kept on asking, where is the developers? Where's the owners? Where's people that invest in this building for them to let this building go down to five managements? No, it took me to call five, five news and Trayvon White to get somewhere with my family. We stood outside from, from five o'clock in the morning to eight o'clock at night. Then one of the owners gonna come at eight o'clock talking about, do I got rental showing? I said, no, I have rental showing. What, the first time it was on me, I said, the second time it was on y'all. Y'all didn't even call and give us a note in the building saying it's an arsonist. Oh, y'all gotta be some, be something, say something. They get the building broken, the, the rental office broke in in December. It's just a mess. For my living conditions, I had to pick up water when it rained in front of my window because I'm on the outside of the building. I'm telling you, I'm tired of picking up that water like a slave, I'm in a wheelchair. I can't keep on doing this and the roaches is back. They took thirty-five bombs five times, the bomb that housed us, I took pictures. And I talked to Mr. Graham, somebody yesterday named Mr. Kenny. He gonna ask me, is I'm gonna testify, yes, because I want it on the record. And I want to get out of the Bixby with my family because it has expanded because I ain't heard of my grandkids when my mother died. And it's just a mess all the way around the board. It's so mentally ill for me because I take medicine already from losing my husband. And having to go through this and go through this, I just need a four bedroom. And they knew when Mr. Dull was there, y'all knew because this not the first time I'm testifying about the building. This about the fifth, sixth time I testified. We just had a little break during the COVID. So he asked me, was I, I'm gonna reach out, they all reaching out, they all helping me. But I'm coming on today to let y'all know what I'm going through. And I don't want to go back to no project because my kids are nice students now. And I don't want to help birth sixteen kids in Berry Farm. I don't want to have to keep on going to these projects. No, I'm not taking my baby there.
Thank you, Ms. Hamilton, so we'll have somebody reach out to you to follow up.
Yeah, I want to go and visit a unit too.
Okay. The Bixby.
John Kennedy did because he said he just started working there. He said he was gonna help.
Okay, Ms. Hamilton.
And Carlos Gray helping me. And.
The next person, I'm gonna go back to Adrian Lynch. Ms. Lynch, I understand that you're on, can you unmute yourself? Perfect.
I did.
We're here, go ahead.
Okay. Okay, um, good afternoon, everyone. I really appreciate, um, the opportunity to testify today. My issue surrounds the housing choice voucher program and the criteria for residents to receive assistance with utilities. And to my knowledge, eligibility goes to the residents who are renters of single-family housing. And if I miss any other D C Housing Authority groups, then my concern includes them as well. I believe, um, D C Housing Authority needs to revisit the criteria for families' eligibility to receive because we have numerous new housing developments throughout the city. And these properties have new requirements in order to live on these properties. And these additional requirements are simply unrealistic for subsidized housing residents. It's as if we are renters of houses instead of apartments. Um, and I believe this is a new normal for everyone in these new developments. And it's just not in line with what subsidized housing means. In addition to rent, the following are requirements. Renters insurance, a hefty amenity fee that I found out recently, it's a hu, it's five hundred dollars and it's annually. And I didn't have it the first time and they allowed me to break up the payment. Here's a list of the other mandatory, um, fees. Water, my water averages forty dollars. Uh, trash removal is fifteen dollars. Processing fees, which is every month, seven dollars. New account fee was twelve dollars at one time. The sewer fee averages eighty dollars. Our electric bill averages seventy dollars a month. And right now, um, because there was some confusion in how to pay these things, uh, my, my bill is over seven hundred dollars now. And my daughter is the one handling the bills. We're not gonna be able to, to even catch up by the time my lease up, which is in August first. Um, and my solution for this, I believe housing needs to revisit the criteria. And also, I think that Mizuto is the property manager. Uh, I think they need to make adjustments along with D C Housing Authority. Because, and they don't tell you this until you move in. They don't tell you all these fees. And it's through the I Z program, they only tell you about renters insurance. But you don't hear anything else until you actually sign the documents and moving in. Um, which is, um, not good. And, uh, it is really stressful, it's really stressful to go through this. I need some help. And I'm sure everybody else who, who's moving in, who are discovering this because you don't discover it right away, you don't realize the impact until about three or four, four months down the road. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lynch.
So we will reach out to her.
We will definitely reach out to you, okay?
Thank you.
Sure. Um, last, the last resident that we had is Donna Towns. Ms. Towns, are you online? I see you, can you do star six to unmute yourself? Okay, I'll move forward to your non-residents. I have Tammy Cowser. Ms. Cowser, are you online? I'll move forward. Next, I have Daniel Del Peliego. Daniel, are you online?
Yes.
Perfect, you have three minutes.
Thank you, good afternoon, everyone, my name is Daniel Del Peliego, I work with Empower DC. I just wanted to briefly bring to attention the effect that the very slow redevelopments are happening. We just recently learned of a former Berry Farm resident who passed, uh, who was living in Syfax Garden, he actually appears in the documentary we, um, made about Berry Farm. And then we hear the issues that we brought up last month, such as the, uh, potential fees that Berry Farm residents will incur because, uh, the developer no longer wants to pay the storage fees. We've heard through many of the Melvo residents who live in the, the Melvo redevelopment. I realize it's not being called that anymore. I think that's the nomenclature, uh, for that development is, uh, you know, many folks were encouraged to get rid of their stuff. Get rid of your stuff because the development's happening and yet nothing has happened. Um, so I wanted to bring, I, I know I've had these conversations with the director, but I just wanted to bring this point up, um, which has resonated with me more, especially since the passing of this, uh, recent resident. Um, you know, we need to, something needs to happen to improve the delivery of these redevelopments. So folks aren't literally dying, uh, waiting to get back, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chairman, that concludes your testimony.
Um, just, just on that note, um, Mr. Pedigree, can you just say a little bit about the, the timing for some of these developments? I know when you arrived, there were a number of projects that were already in process. Um, you know, Berry Farms being one, Park Morton and others. Um, and, you know, they've been in the process for a long time, so.
Yeah, well, before I got here.
So, so can you just let, let us know a little bit about, you know, I don't, I know you, you're working on sort of a, a master long-range plan. But can you tell us a little bit about what's happening, kind of in the short term? Kind of, uh, length some of the concerns that, uh, former residents have and others have about the, the timing for some of these projects?
Yeah, so obviously, uh, first phase of Berry should be coming online this summer, uh, as well as Kenilworth. Um, um, and Sheila, I forgot what Park Morton is, Sheila's on. Uh, I know that's coming up relatively soon as well, so, but that's been a concern of mine and I'm.
Park Morton will be coming online this fall, phase one.
Uh, and I'm still trying to get moms around the actual process for development projects here in the city. And I was saying, I was getting things done in maybe two or three years. We got to entitlements one in one year. Um, so I, we need to sort of take a look at where we are. Um, one of the good things that has happened since my arrival is that several individuals in the city, uh, Danison and those who sell telling me that, listen, whatever you need for us to expedite, we will. So I, I feel good about the fact that people are rallying around where we are and trying to assist and making sure that we get things pushed through, uh, property buildings, uh, to handling. So I think what you're gonna see, you're gonna see more and more expedited process as we move forward now. And also we're gonna revisit some of these things with regard to putting pressure on these development partners as well. Uh, some things are taking a little longer than they should be. Um, and so I have no problem putting pressure on the development artists. They may not understand that we do need to get this thing moved a little bit.
And Sheila, you may want to weigh in this, I, on Melvo, I think, challenge there is that it was, folks may remember, I think that was one of the first projects we approved as a new board last January. The problem was, I think it hit the debt cap, uh, the bond cap issue rather. And so we quit, the financing wasn't able to be completed. And I think you guys are revisiting maybe for an alternative method. So it's, it's not, you know, you hate, I, I certainly understand why people are impatient. You hate for them to think that it's because people are sitting on their hands. It's not that, it's because they're running up against problems that have to be worked through.
Yeah, that bond cap issue, look, it up.
I, I have a concern after listening. Um, a lot of the residents that are facing needs redevelopment, um, public housing resident, um, for them to be paying utilities, as I believe that was Ms. Thomas, uh, Ms. Smith, saying, this is a hardship. How? I want to talk about truth and disclosure. How do we know that the residents are aware, you know, that things are not like housing because you're saying water, you're saying electric, you, I mean, we're putting them in places just of like setting them up for failure, setting them up for eviction. What is, is that if it's redone and it's still public housing, will they? We've been told a lot part of Melvo and it's been going on since twenty fifteen, that's not just last year. It's a long time. Um, every, when we return, everything will be the same. Who can guarantee everything will be the same? Will we now have to pay utilities that people have never paid before? Um, is there an option? This is just a suggestion, okay? Is there an option? And if there's not an option, how can we, the authority, uh, prep our residents? So that would, they would be more educational, you know, they would know what's going on, what's going to happen and be truthful with them before they signed that lease to let them know once you leave this property, you're under a new management. Whatever fees that they may deem necessary, they can pass on to you because that's a concern for me.
And we should be doing that. Uh, now, what has been done and that, I don't know, I can't speak to that. But I truly understand what you're talking about and we, I'd like to educate people on the front end, um, to let them know so. And I'm assuming that now that Mr. Shaw is here, uh, when people do move to these new properties of being transferred because of development activities, it's, take out when they get a voucher. Public housing side of it is easy, right? It's the voucher side that I think people tend to lose sight of. And that's why it's always important to teach people, uh, about the life as a voucher holder because it's completely different and, and there are certain fees and things that come along with it. Uh, and so I, I'm a little concerned, that's why I want to meet Ms. Lynch and talk to her a little bit and find out what we've been doing, what we haven't been doing, but we'll, we'll get better at that in the front end.
And the last part, there was a time, and I know this was a long time ago, when people got vouchers, they would come to eleven three, they would be educated. They could ask questions. Everything is online. If you don't know how to get online and you assume you think you have a voucher, you might be signing up for something that's gonna bring you demise. Maybe just the thought as we move forward with all these wonderful things we're doing, we can get back to, and I know it's time consuming, but these residents and this is their lives, educating them about the voucher, how it actually works and not just going online, putting in a number, getting a specialist who in some cases don't know as much as the resident. Just the thought.
That's why I'm bringing them back to work. We can have these sessions, right? You know, as a matter of fact, we got into an argument about which room I'm gonna use, right? It would do me that. Hey, so now you can't have that room, I said, nah, that's my briefing room. So we're gonna get back to it.
So Chairman, I just want to bring to your attention, Commissioner Blackson has her hand raised.
Okay, Commissioner Blackson.
Thank you. I'm, I'm well, thank you. Um, I just wanted to, uh, piggyback off Commissioner Burbridge and what she shared. Um, for years I shared with D C H A, uh, about my agency who used to partner with D C Housing Authority to educate residents on, um, energy efficiency and utilities and the resources out there for residents to use or utilize. Um, I recently retired from the Office of the People's Council in October twenty twenty-three. And I was the energy efficiency specialist that taught people simple and practical tips they can use around their home that wasn't cost effective. And I'm in agreements with education is key. And most people learn hands-on versus virtual or being able to read, you know, everyone learns differently. So I would recommend, um, I can also deal with this on a Resident Services Committee, um, platform. But I would recommend a few agencies and people I can directly contact to connect with getting those things back started. And I want to say, um, I used to educate the D C House.
She's dead.
Oh, wait a minute, somebody else is talking. I used to, um, partner with Mr. Nelson and Ms. Judy in the past to educate the homeowners workshop. But I believe anybody utilizing a voucher or residents on public housing can also get this education because any property that's coming down or may come down in the future. And if you come from three or four generations that never paid a utility bill, you have no idea where to begin and where to start. And one thing that's not stated enough is that if your utility goes off, you're, you can lose your voucher and then that creates another form of homelessness. So that's all I wanted to share about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, if there's, um, nothing else, we're gonna move to the next, uh, agenda item, which is committee reports. Uh, and I'm gonna start with the Capital Projects Committee, Commissioner Murphy.
Okay, um, we're gonna get some help from Sheila Miller on this in a moment. Um, so just a quick, um, update from our committee. Um, and I want to thank all of our commissioners and invite them to chime in if they think I missed anything here. We started by welcoming Sheila Miller, who is our new head of, uh, capital programs and thrilled to have her from, joining the team from Dem Head where she ran, um, new communities. So we talked about Berry Farm today, she knows that program very well. We, um, we talked about the resolutions, which we'll get to in a moment. We then had a brief discussion about the new communities program and sort of tried to get our heads around the forthcoming investment that will be needed to make those various projects move forward. And one of the things that I think we were heartened by is that the director and his team are gonna be looking at the new communities model kind of from the, with, with a fresh set of eyes and, and, you know, sharing some thoughts with us and potentially with the council and others about whether, um, it's structured the right way. Obviously, we know we need these, these projects to move forward, but I think there is sort of an open question and it'd be helpful to get, to get your eyes on this about whether the new communities model is the right one to use because it is very resource intensive. We then talked, uh, about a, a topic that will be familiar to, uh, all the board members, which is, uh, resident communication. And sort of noting that a lot of the work that we do in capital projects, it's, they're capital projects or capital programs projects, but they're, but the, the communication often needs to happen with residents, which isn't in our committee. And so we're really glad that the, the director and his team are gonna be working on a communication, communication plan. Like, so for example, the, you know, Daniel brought up Melvo today. I, I don't know that we've communicated with folks, you know, but hopefully, once we get this communication initiative up and running, we'll, we'll sort of have a little bit clearer communication closer to real time with residents about what's happening.
I think the same applies, and I don't know, of course, what you're doing, you got a lot of things to do, you can't do them all at once, but like.
uh, people who are very, who, like me, who aren't very good with the computer and are trying to figure out what the, this, that, and the other, that's another area. If we could find a way to do a community, have communications around that, that would be helpful. Uh, and even, I don't know if we have computer labs at all or some kind of a computer room and, and the public housing site or a site that's near and the same thing that people can come to and be shown, be talked with. I think that all the communication around some of that would be very helpful. And I, I, I identify with people who are not computer literate and don't want to be. All that much. So, uh, I, I think there's ways that we can help with that over time. I know we got a lot on, can't do it all at once. But I just think that communication, like you're talking, it can be spread across several areas.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be glad to hear your thoughts on that as, as they emerge. Um, we then spent some time talking about the urgent needs, um, initiative and the contracting, talked about the regular updates that we'll be getting from here on out. Um, we had a really robust conversation about data and the timing of the data. And I think one of the things, because there were some open questions that we didn't feel were appropriate to work at in the committee, we asked the staff to come back to us this month with a recommendation about what the right cadence is for those reports and whether we do one or two, one for the committee, another one for the board meeting, or we just do one for the committee and we hold it for the board meeting, even understanding it might be a little bit stale, but it might make sense to just have one document a month. So we'll look forward to hearing the staff's recommendation at next month's committee meeting. And then we, uh, so then we'll talk about Berry Farm. So we've got two resolutions, um, for the board to consider today. Um, in just a second, I'm going to turn to Sheila and ask her to sort of give us a quick reminder or refresh our memory about Berry Farm. Um, you may recall that we have already approved two resolutions of, on Berry Farm last year, one in April, one in June. Um, the topics, as you'll be reminded, are pre-development costs and infrastructure costs. The city is, is allocating money to us to move these projects forward. But in order for us to draw down those dollars, we have to enter into an MOU with Demp Head, Deputy Mayor for Planning and Economic Development, which we've done. And then we have to periodically amend those MOUs to be able to draw down the funding. So it's the Fourth Amendment to the MOU on infrastructure that we're considering today and the Sixth Amendment to the MOU on pre-development costs that we are considering today. Uh, let me turn it over to Sheila, who's got just a couple of slides to sort of explain to us phase one versus phase two and, and sort of what we're talking about today.
Thank you, Commissioner, and good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm, I'm going to attempt to share my screen, so bear with me here. Is it sharing?
No.
Yeah.
Uh, if it, if I can't get this to work, I'll just have to walk through. I, I trust that all the Commissioners have a copy of the PowerPoint presentation?
Yeah, I should say, we, Sheila uploaded it into our board books. It's under.
Yeah. Yeah. So what?
Yeah, so if we need to look at it, you can look at it there.
Yeah, yeah, because I'm, I'm having some technical challenges. So I'll just dive right in. Um, thank you again, Commissioner Murphy, and good afternoon, Commissioners. As Commissioner Murphy described, we, uh, are presenting, uh, for your approval, uh, two MOUs related to the Berry Farm redevelopment. Um, first, I'd like to give a brief overview of, of the Berry Farm redevelopment and you'll get a better sense of how the two MOUs, uh, fit into that. Um, so first, um, in, in your presentations, there is a picture of the overall redevelopment. Um, the Berry Farm redevelopment, um, upon completion will contain approximately nine hundred and eighty units, um, of which three hundred and eighty will be, will be replacement units. And the replacement units again serve as, um, replacement of the public housing units that were taken offline. We do have some other replacement units that are offsite, but the majority will be, um, onsite at, on Berry Farm. Um, the overall redevelopment, um, will, uh, be, uh, constructed into two phases. Um, right now we're in phase one. Um, and, uh, I believe as, uh, executive, I mean, ED Pettigrew, uh, uh, mentioned, um, Berry Farm, um, will be coming online, um, in the next couple of months, the first building. Um, that will be followed by, um, another multifamily, one hundred and thirty-eight unit multifamily building that will commence construction later this year. So we're, we're making progress. And yeah, I, I can, um, I can emphasize with the sense of timing, it takes a long time for projects of the scale to, to come online. Just having to go through zoning, which takes quite a bit of time and then arranging for financing. So, um, again, so the project will be developed into two phases. Um, phase one will be comprised of five hundred and sixty-one units, uh, which two hundred and twenty-nine approximately will be replacement units. And that's where we are today. Um, phase two will contain four hundred and approximately four hundred and twenty units with a hundred and fifty replacement units. Um, phase one is scheduled to be completed, um, by 2026. That's the goal. Um, and then phase two will commence in 2026 and will be completed in 2030. Um, so in your presentation, I won't go over it, but there is a, a breakdown of the different buildings, the different components of the fa, uh, phase one and phase two, what it'll be comprised of, uh, the multifamily, the number of units, the number of replacement units, et cetera. So let's dive into the request. Um, the pre-development, um, MOU, Resolution 2404, uh, will be used for pre-development, um, planning, designing, engineering permitting for phase two vertical construction, primarily centered around buildings three and four, which are highlighted, uh, in your presentation on slide four. And there's a blue bracket around it. Um, and then also some of those pre-development proceeds will be used, uh, for additional community outreach and services. Um, and then Resolution 2405 is for the infrastructure, uh, work related to the Berry Farm development. And the infrastructure work will be tied to section, and there's a map in your presentation, the area, uh, infrastructure one B. Um, and so, uh, and, and I did, I'm sorry. Phase two, excuse me, phase two, uh, eighteen million dollars for phase two infrastructure work. And then, um, there were some cost overruns in, uh, infrastructure phase one B, um, that, okay, thank you, uh, in infrastructure. Okay, I, I can't get it. So yeah, thank you though. Um, infrastructure, uh, work in one B, there were some cost overruns due just to increased in construction costs. And I think that is pretty much it. I'll cover it quite a bit in a, in a pretty short timeframe, so I will pause there for any questions.
Thank you. So again, I just want to say the committee did have a chance to, um, sort of stress test both these resolutions, ask questions, got answers to them. One of the things we clarified, and it's just worth saying out loud, is that, um, Resolution 1606 that governs the, um, these kinds of NCI projects that guarantees things like right of return, certainly. So we, we just reconfirmed that that was in place.
That is correct.
And, uh, sorry, any, any questions?
No, so, so I was just going to ask this. Let's deal with Resolution 2404 first. That's the, uh, pre-develop.
Pre-development.
Uh, so, uh, are there any further questions?
I just want to know, uh, are there any anticipate, do you anticipate any costs, oh, you know, any additional cost or more cost? We're in an era of inflation, you know, cost or flick, or up and down. I just wonder if that, you know, uh, and it, it can come anytime. So have you, is factored that in in any way?
Yes. So I don't anticipate, uh, instruction, um, an increase in costs related to pre-development. There's always the risk for increased, increased costs in the infrastructure. However, the developer, POA, has been working um, with contractors to kind of nail down that price to avoid, uh, any, any escalations. Timing and the progression of when the, uh, infrastructure work is taking place, locking in those contracts early is critical. Um, and so they're really trying to manage and contain, um, any, any increase in costs, um, uh, during this phase. You know, the, the, if, if I may, for the first phase, I mentioned there would be, there were cost overruns and one B. That's an example of, uh, the progression, uh, construction costs increasing, uh, while the, the infrastructure work was progressing. Now, granted, this was the first phase, so there was a lot of work uh, that needed to be done. Um, but, but the POA has gotten a better handle, I believe, on really trying to contain the cost. Now, obviously, you know, a lot of things are out of control, uh, outside of our control in terms of, um, construction cost increases, but they're, they're doing their best to contain it.
Thank you, Ms. Miller.
You're welcome.
We should be clear about is, you know, is it, there's cost increases, but there's, so they, they may have to come, we come back and ask for additional funds. But what we know is that they're going to have to do is come back and ask for additional funds for additional aspects of the project.
That is correct.
Final infrastructure investments, potentially other pre-development costs on other pieces of the puzzle. So it, when we, when we do this, I just want to be clear with everybody. It's not like we're saying, okay, we're done now. And then if we come back, people say, I thought we were done. We're not done. We know that there are lots of future phases, phases is, that's right, we're future stages of the project that will require future investment.
We're almost done, but not quite there yet. But yes, we will, we will be coming back. Once we have budget approval, we will be coming back.
And just for the record, POA Preservation of Affordable Housing is our
Yes.
Partner, is the Housing Authority Development Partner for this project. So, um, having said that, uh, the chair will entertain a report, motion, uh, to approve Resolution 24 dash O four, uh, dealing with the Berry Farms, uh, pre-development.
So moved.
Second.
We have a roll call vote?
Sure.
Commissioner Ronnie Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Katrina Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Chris Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Teresa Sella?
Yes.
Commissioner Jim Dickerson?
Yes.
Commissioner Melissa Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Denise Blackson?
Yes.
Thank you. And Chairman Raymond Skinner?
Yes. Forgive me.
You have.
She always forgets.
You have, your resolution is approved.
Okay. Uh, so next we'll go to Resolution 24 dash O five, uh, and this is to, um, the, uh, additional funding for the infrastructure for the Berry Farms project. Uh, can we get a motion for?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Sure. Commissioner Denise Blackson?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Chris Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Teresa Sella?
Yes.
Commissioner Melissa Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Katrina Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Ronnie Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Jim Dickerson?
Yes.
Chairman Raymond Skinner?
Yes.
You have eight resolutions approved.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, Commissioner, read the chairs, the Budget Audit Committee is not here. I don't know if there's any updates from any of the committee members.
Talked about, discussed. Um, so, uh, we received a, a report from the new CFO. Um, that was a very detailed report of the current, uh, financial, that went through, um, kind of the current, um, income statement, if you will, to show where we are. Um, the, the authority seems to be in, in great condition, but she did speak to uh, some issues that, uh, that she saw when she came aboard, um, especially how historically, um, the agency didn't budget by property. And so that's one of the things she's going to do to change and update to, uh, to be able to account for, um, all of the expenses and, and the cost by property. Um, another thing that we talked about as, um, as Director Pettigrew mentioned, the audit is currently, um, on schedule to, uh, to, to deliver to the committee in the March meeting. And this is the twenty-two audit, the committee in the March meeting and then to the full board in our next month's meeting to, to, to pass for, uh, to be done for twenty-two. And then twenty-three right behind that. And I think that's, I know something, I don't know if anyone would add anything else.
Okay, so the Operations and Administrative Services Committee, uh, Commissioner Jones, uh, do you have a report or?
Yeah, I want to defer to Commissioner Sella. Present at the meeting. Yes, yes. Um, no, no problem. So this is Commissioner, um, Sella. Um, so, um, we, um, had, uh, two topics, but quite an extensive discussion, so please bear with me. Um, the first discussion was related to, uh, return to work. Um, and Director Pettigrew, uh, emphasized that he wanted to address the significant concerns around the process and customer service, especially related to vouchers and voucher processing. And so, uh, he gave us, um, a very comprehensive update related to the, um, properties that he evaluated, the number of people that need to return to, um, work and the options, both the long-term option and the short-term immediate option. Um, and so, uh, we talked a little bit about that. Um, we had a number of questions around the location of the long-term option versus the short-term option. Um, and there was a general discussion and agreement that the short-term option is actually probably the ideal option, um, although of course it's not in our portfolio and therefore, you know, we're going to work with the long-term option that is in our portfolio. Um, so that's one piece, um, of the agenda. The second part of the agenda was related to the homeless preference and the role that the DC Housing Authority plays on the Interagency Council on Homelessness. Um, so this was
Which you chair.
Yes. No, well, no, the city administrator chairs the Interagency Council on Homelessness. Um, I, uh, support the city administrator in managing, uh, the Interagency Council on Homelessness. Um, the DC Housing Authority is a critical partner, uh, one of the, um, government agencies that is represented on our board. Um, and they have a significant role on our, uh, executive committee, on our, on all of our committees. Um, and the work of the DC Housing Authority impacts, um, all of our work groups. And so I wanted to, because the Interagency Council on Homelessness is doing its annual priorities and projects, I took the opportunity to orient, um, the director and his team, uh, around the goals of, um, our, the priorities and projects that we're currently evaluating. Um, they are very much in alignment with the work of the director. Um, so we are, for example, um, really interested in understanding the housing process, making sure that there are grievance and escalation protocols, making sure that we have established performance metrics for especially related to utilization. Um, so we're thinking about both the process of housing as well as the outcomes. How quickly are we, um, leasing up our, um, constituents, our shared constituents? Um, and understanding what consumer complaints are, making sure we have a clear, uh, pathway for addressing them. Um, the director, uh, and his team, um, Hamara Gabrias in particular, uh, reported out that, uh, DHS and, um, uh, DC Housing Authority had met to talk through the roles and responsibilities of the two agencies, the areas in which there, um, there are certain policies that the Housing Authority has that has unintended consequences um, and a significant impact on our ability to expedite housing and lease up. And so, um, you know, we talked through those details. Um, additionally, uh, I oriented the director and his team to the importance of the homeless preference, um, and also, uh, suggested that we, uh, expand the homeless preference or that we at least consider expanding the homeless preference to include individuals that are at risk of homelessness um, and, uh, what that might look like. Um, so, uh, as, so that was like the bulk of that discussion. Now, I do want to also note that um, there are other priorities that, um, the Interagency Council on Homelessness has that, uh, overlap or that may also be of importance to, um, the DC Housing Authority. So, uh, for example, the opioid epidemic and its impact on, um, people that are experiencing homelessness, but also on district, um, de, Housing Authority residents was a part of that discussion as well. We noted that there is an overlap with Resident Services or the Committee on Resident Services, uh, but that there is a role that operations and, uh, administrative services plays. For example, in terms of whether property managers have Narcan, um, onboard and are properly trained in the administration of Narcan to prevent deaths and, uh, fatal overdoses was a part of that discussion. Um, and then safety and security is a significant. Um, and then safety and security is a significant, um, you know, violence is a significant issue in the district. And so that was also a part of our conversation. So these are kind of the priority areas that we mapped out. We discussed that an hour is not sufficient time for um addressing all of these priorities as part of our committee. Uh, and I'm very pleased to report that for the next meeting, we've allotted an hour and a half for our um committee meeting.
Thank you. Okay, so. Let's let's go to the um. Committee on Resident Services, and then we'll come back to the the additional resolution we have. So uh Commissioner Blackson, do you have a report?
Thank you, Chair Skinner. Um, the last Resident Services Committee meeting took place on February twenty ninth. Um, the Resident Services Committee is self explanatory, is focused on residents, resident concerns. Um, I'm very focused for twenty twenty four to bring the right trainings and education. That's what the twenty twenty four focus is with Resident Services Committee. Um, we often work hand in hand with resident leaders and with the Office of Resident Services, um, and the Directorate there. Um, I don't have any updates or anything to add at this time, except that we're working on um the trainings for twenty twenty four and education. Commissioner Burbage, is there anything that I left out?
No, we're doing good. Um, the Citywide Advisory Board new slogans is restart reboot. Uh, we're working with the Resident Council President. We have an upcoming trip to Baltimore Housing Authority to meet with Philadelphia Housing Authority and Annapolis Housing Authority. So we can better coordinate and collaborate with the authority because we all have the same goal, the residents. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Burbage. And I just want to share if residents ever need to reach me, um, again, I'm Commissioner Denise Blackson. And I can be reached at two oh two two five zero four four five one. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Blackson. Okay, uh, as I said, we have two other resolutions, and I'm gonna turn to the Executive Director. One is uh Resolution twenty four dash oh six, and this is to authorize the execution of a lease for temporary relocation. Uh, which Commissioner Silla alluded to in her report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, I'm gonna turn over to my boss. My deputy. A strong real estate background and make sure that all these turns were good between her and Amy, you know, they keep me in a safe space.
Right, so.
About as far as got a real clear trouble.
Alright, so for Resolution twenty four oh six, we're um requesting authorization that the Executive Director can execute the commercial office lease at seven zero two eight street. Um, again, as said earlier, this will be the temporary location um for staff to return to work at least four days um on the four days a week. Again, um, April one is our return to work day. Again, staff in the office four days a week, we will have the office location open actually five days a week, the coverage um for telework four days a week. Headquarters office uh is not sufficient to bring all staff back, therefore, the interim uh co- short term commercial lease for an initial term. Of eighteen months, which will allow us, if needed, renewals up to five years. Um, if we need to get out sooner than that, there will be no penalty as long as we do our initial term of eighteen months and then give adequate notice. So again, this is requesting authorization. If there are any questions, we'll take any questions.
So I have two questions. One, um, what is the the alternative that you looked at? I'm I understand that we have some space in one of our uh developments, one of our public housing developments that we're looking at. As a permanent location.
We um initially looked into one of our locations at eleven seventy.
Eleven seventy.
Twelfth Street. Eleven seventy twelfth.
She still learned it.
Yes, I am. So eleven seventy uh twelfth Street was our initial location that we were looking at to bring staff back. Um, after walking the site, it's gonna take some time, so it would not accommodate the return to work this year at all. Um, so we will still be looking at that, that's our long term permanent option, so we will pivot and look at that. But that was not conducive to have our staff back in the office to increase our customer service um by April one.
And a couple of things.
Well, the other question is um about this building that that we're in here. Um, I certainly was under the impression, I don't know if any other other board members who were on the board at that time. I was under the impression when we agreed and approved the lease for this building, that it would accommodate all of our staff. So, you know, I was just surprised to hear very recently that we had a lot of people who were still working from home. And and that there's not enough space in this building to accommodate them. So I'm, you know, I know you had nothing to do with that, but.
Yeah, please don't put that on me.
And it's curious, because I think didn't they sign the lease on this before the pandemic? So it's not even like there was a massive move to telework. When I just it's puzzling, I don't understand that.
Twenty two, I think, is when.
I would have to assume, I think, given the conditions, maybe people assumed that's the way the world was gonna be. Clearly, it's not.
The other thing too is like, uh, in addition to eleven seventy, we have a lot of property. And the other plan is always to look to other property to be able to rehab it and have our our employees working with the residents. I've always I've always been a a proponent of that, having our building where the staff are with residents as well. Uh, so we're gonna be looking to, ideally, I want some space in each quadrant of the city.
Yes.
That that that's the sort of convenient for residents to get to us. Uh, it's it's the ideal thing. Now, also, we got a lot of land, then we may need to build a building uh and start the process, but it's like.
That's music, you know, that's music to my ears, because when you first came aboard, I said to you, yeah, within ten years, we need to own our own building. But but it's gonna take that long, you know, I'm be I'm.
I have some ideas about how we think we could probably expect this process to look faster. Uh, but just so you all know, we are looking at alternatives. Uh, but the main thing is to try to get staff in the four quadrants, uh, so they can get the people. Um, uh, but but the location we have at Chinatown is really right across you from the metro, literally.
Right.
Um, and we were paying for parking for the staff so that that way and and even residents can park. And I mean, uh, residents and applicants can park there too when they come to visit. Uh, we did look at one other space, as you all know, we looked at eighty M Street over in southwest in the Navy Yard area.
Okay.
But this space was just so more conducive, the metro is literally right there. Uh, for the staff, there's plenty of places to eat around there, so I just thought that was a better location.
Okay.
And I have just one question, but uh, how are we paying for this? Is this this is off budget or not off budget, but it was unbudgeted, right? So this will be, this expense will get added to our budget.
Up to our CFO.
So it's an ACV space, so it'll come out of the ACVP budget, and we'll definitely budget for it in the twenty twenty five budget. Um, but we have a lot of money in the ACV program.
We have reserves.
So we can use some of that?
Yes.
Okay. So and and you said that it's anticipated for about eighteen months, and then hopefully the new space will be ready by then.
Yeah, but that new space wouldn't kind of accommodate everybody. That's why I'm looking for four spaces in the four quadrants.
Oh, I see. When you said, I didn't understand when you said that, that you were talking specifically about this function, I thought you meant more broadly.
Okay, if there are no other questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution twenty four dash oh six to authorize the executive director to execute commercial lease. No move? Second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote?
Sure.
Jim Dickerson?
Yes.
Teresa Silla?
Yes.
Katrina Jones?
Yes.
Chris Murphy?
Yes.
Ronnie Harris?
Yes.
Denise Blackson?
Yes.
Melissa Lee?
Yes.
And Chairman Raymond Skinner?
Yes.
You have eight resolutions approved.
Okay, then the final resolution is Resolution twenty four dash seven, and this is uh to allow the Executive Director to execute vision contracts for our vacant units repair program. She talked about earlier.
Yes, so I'll I'll tee it up and I'll turn over to Kim uh for more detail. Uh, obviously, when I first arrived and I started to assess what we were, we needed to get utilization up relatively quickly. Pressure from uh pressure from the Attorney General, pressure from the public in general. Um, so we we did execute those emergency contracts, it only lasts hundred twenty days. And I believe at the last meeting, we talked about how we needed to now put we put up, we had put out an RFP. And we were gonna be bringing on more vendors, but also we needed to go to RFP route because the emergency time frame would expire. This also allowed us to add additional money in order to 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 pay for more vendors in order to attack this problem quickly as possible. Uh, so here we are now, um, I think we have like thirty, thirty, thirty vendors now, as opposed to like fourteen under the emergency one. So we're really looking to attack this problem very aggressively and get our utilization up as quickly as possible. Um, and so we're coming for you now to ask that you approve this. Now, the one thing I would do want to point out is that these contracts will be over ten hours, so we don't have to worry about the city council. Um, and it's only for one year for right now, and if we can need it next year, we will. But with this aggressive approach and this many vendors, they'll be taken care of by task forces, you know as well, that's how we're gonna manage the cost. So uh, we're extremely excited about this process and getting more boots to the ground so that we can take care of it. And on top of that, we'll be coming back to you guys next month uh to approve uh more inspectors to do quality control. Uh inspections on units that be interned as well as pest pest services to start treating all the other units that we have.
Okay.
Uh, Kim, you want anything?
So what why don't we, in excess of time, why don't we just go to questions? I think, you know, we we've had your report, and hopefully the commissioners have read it.
Some. Thank you, Director. I, how do you, how do you divide this them up? Because there's repairs and then there's repairs and then there's really repairs. You know, I know that. So how how are how are you thinking to, you know, streamline and organize this? I'm just interested, I'm curious.
Yeah, well, well, most of the vendors will tell you what their specialty and what their strong suit is, whether they want the long term ones. What I like to do is just spread the wealth. Um, and whoever does the best work, and we identified those doing the best work. But um, so some are gonna say they want that they want the units to take thirty days or more, because it's gonna generate more money for them. But my thing is to spread it out. So to say for instance, if I got thirty vendors, that's okay, if I have ironically thirty units that need substantial rehab, it'll take more than thirty days. I'll give these more than vendors of thirty days. That way, nobody can complain about somebody's getting the units that are gonna make more money. I want to just keep it even as possible. Yeah, that's how it is.
Other questions? If there are none, then I'll, and I'm sorry, I have another question, and and I'm not sure if I'm reading it, so does I, hopefully this question makes sense. Um, I see the forty eight million dollar amount.
Right.
Um, but it's only thirty and then we'll exceed a million, so how do how do we get to the forty eight?
Well, here's what happened, that that was sort of an error.
Okay, okay.
Forty eight shouldn't have been there at all. We 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 looked at initially, when we looked at it, was forty eight, but our thing was only going to be for one year and a half. And so and at that point, it's like, we're not gonna get to forty eight at all. Uh, it would be managed by task order. But anyways, I don't see anybody even getting to a million, uh, to be frank, given the, because it's about the average of thirty seven thousand dollars to turn a unit, right? And so uh, we we ran some rough and a little math, and and the fact that we have so many vendors, that's gonna spread it out too. So it's not like anybody's gonna be approaching a million, and we'll we'll be tracking the task, she'll be tracking the task, so.
So so given you have so many vendors, my my concern is about how to manage that in the quality control.
Yeah.
How do you how do you really stay on top of it and make sure that they're doing what they said they're gonna do, that what they're supposed to do?
Right, so we have a couple of people that already managed the process, the emergency process. So we feel good about how it's gonna be managed. And again, they're gonna be task ordered, that they're gonna be tracking. And then on the flip side of it, obviously, when we bring in more inspectors, that's gonna be the quality control piece, uh, to make sure that what the work that is being done is quality work, so.
I I will support this, obviously, I guess, um, but I just maybe just a request, because I'm sensitive to your, it feels a little strange to. Do something for forty eight million dollars, but then have specifics that doesn't come close to forty eight million dollars, it sort of feels weird.
But I did, I said forty eight was still good.
Forty eight million actually would be for two years, right? So it would be a one year, but an option to do a two year. But if we not enter into a two year contract, um, we'll do one year if needed, then we would go get council approval, because it'll be a multi year. If not, if we just do the one year, then we'll rebid. So the two year is the ag, I mean, the forty eight million is aggregate of two years.
For two years, I see. That's helpful.
Yeah, I forgot about them, see, that's why she's the brain.
Yeah, I know. If somebody remembered the details.
Yes.
Okay, after no further questions, uh, I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution twenty four dash oh seven for authorized contracts for the vacant unit repair, make ready service.
Motion?
Motion, second?
Second.
Roll call vote?
Sure. Commissioner Melissa Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Katrina Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Teresa Silla?
Yes.
Commissioner Chris Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Denise Blackson?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Jim Dickerson?
Yes.
Commissioner Ronnie Harris?
Yes.
Chairman Raymond Skinner?
Yes.
You have eight resolutions approved.
Okay, so the last item on our agenda is commissioners' time. And again, it's just an opportunity to go around and see if the commissioners have any issues or concerns they want to bring up.
I would like to make a comment. Commissioner Burbage, first of all, I want to thank the executive, the new team, the new board, our executive director and deputy, thank you. Um, we appreciate you, I see the change. But most importantly, I want to take this moment to thank the most important people in the room, the residents of DC HA. Thank you for being patient. Uh, for so long, we have said change is coming, change is here, and from the comments, we see that it's working. I want to thank you for your diligence, I want to thank you for asking for transparency. Thank you for responding with accountability, thank the uh board for responding with visibility. Um, our future seems bright, i- it seems like there is really a rainbow at the end of the tunnel, a light at the end of the tunnel. I'm so glad with the things that's going on, and I personally, myself, want to thank this whole staff board just for being here, for listening to us. Um, previously, when I was on the other side, it was like people, I didn't matter. I had to get angry, I had to get frustrated, and I still didn't matter. But as a resident, I feel so good, as a commissioner, I feel better. But again, my thanks go to the residents of DC HA for just enduring and knowing that their prayers would be answered. So thank you all, that's it.
Thank you.
I stayed in about three minutes.
I didn't give you a timeline. Commissioner Silla?
Yeah, I I want to, um, I I wasn't going to, um, I I gave my compliments prior to the board meeting. Because I did not want to be unduly complimentary on the spot during the board meeting. Uh, but.
So it can't be on the record.
Yes, yes, I, after listening to um the uh number of residents, right? There's a significant, like, last board meeting, it was stunning, the change in the feedback that was being received, the participation on the board. Um, and to see that increase, right? Like that change that we're, we we continue to move in that direction, um, I think is is very noteworthy. Um, so uh, congratulations to the director and his team. Uh, congratulations for um uh uh performance oversight. Uh, that was, um, you know, I caught the tail end, I was very impressed. Um, uh, yesterday, the director was at the um full council meeting of the Interagency Council on Homelessness. Um, we had a quarter, we have a quarterly in person meeting. Um, thank you for remembering uh our constituents with lived experience who sit on our board, their testimonies on uh during performance oversight. For directly like making that link to them, I trust that you will follow up. I will be following up with you, but I, you you clearly have a track record uh of following up. Uh, so congratulations on that front as well. Um, it is wonderful to to be on the other side of um of this change or to like really see it coming to fruition. So it is greatly appreciated. Uh, our board members yesterday uh really asked for uh the director to establish the infrastructure, the staffing infrastructure. Um, at the Housing Authority, they reiterated that uh we need to work on inspections, that we need to uh work on the lease up process. We need to understand which pieces of that the Housing Authority is responsible for. So trust and believe that in our committee meetings, I will be asking those questions and I will want to. and I will want to see the data that backs up to my constituents that we really are doing the job we're supposed to be doing here. So just wanted to flag, congratulate you and also flag um those concerns.
Okay.
I hesitate to say, but I wanted to add, uh, we do have people, I know, not everybody, but I do know people who are really have this, who are landlords, who are owners, who have a commitment and calling to uh uh the uh, the folks that we do, our residents and the people who are applying to. And I think we also, we're taking care of residents, but we also have to cultivate those relationships for ones that are really good. There's not everybody, I'm not talking about, but the people that, we want to build a bigger uh community of landlords and owners who are really committed to this along with us and support us as well. So I think for me, I see that happening. I see people, I see staff responsive. Uh, we have a ways to go, and I just think we need to be diligent and persistent and going forward. So I'm excited too. The, the, the future has hope in it, so that's great. But we do have, as you well know, a ways to go.
But the outreach has started, which is a good thing.
It's a good thing.
You know, and, and so, well, we'll be hammered.
Good.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, if not, then the next uh Board of Commissioners meeting will be held on Wednesday, April the tenth, twenty twenty-four, at one P M. Via Webex, information regarding viewing or participating in the meeting live can be found at our website, And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. No move? Second?
Second.
And the mo- the, the meeting is adjourned at two thirty.
Hello?
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 Hi, my name is Donna Towns, Park Morton resident. And earlier today, um, you called my name, but I was having technical issues, and I've got it resolved with Ms. Hernandez. So I would like to testify today before the meeting is adjourned, please.
Okay, Ms. Towns.
Ms. Towns, three minutes.
I didn't hear you.
Three minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
One second, please. Okay. Hello?
Yes.
My name is Donna Towns, my name is Donna Townsend, I'm a Park Morton resident. And um I was called to testify today regarding the issues which I've had with the Park Morton managers over years, a year's time. And I would like to begin, I would like to thank DCHA for um backdating my May to twenty seventeen, March eighteenth rent. I have been um submitting uh uh several complaints, and now it's finally, the rent charges have finally been resolved. And also, I want to say, the recertification package has been resolved. But in twenty twenty-one, I submitted my recertification package to Ms. Betty Diallo, and it's never been processed, and it's caused me a lot of headache and pain and stress because she, I don't know what's, she didn't abide by section six B eighteen hundred or her housing manager duties. So um on, on September eleventh in twenty twenty-three, I received a thirty-day notice to cure or vacate regarding the certification, and I also received a notice of intent to file notice to, for possession of my property regarding the non-backdated rent charges. I don't believe I should have been um issued those, putting that mental strain on me when it's the, the Park Morton managers who didn't do their job. I've done my job, I paid my rent, I paid my rent, I put my recertification packages in, in everything. So I've been, I've done my tenant obligations, and I'm very disappointed. And I'd like to move forward with the unlawful addition of my six twenty Morton Street apartment number twenty-one. Um, I signed the new lease on, 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 on May thirtieth of nineteen twenty nineteen, and on May thirty-first, um, my property was disposed of. The, all the staff took possession of everything with value within my apartment, and I'm left with nothing but dresses with no drawers. The, all my, everything has been gone, and I'd like to move forward. I need to be compensated, um, you know, something to help to rebuild my life. And then I also want to say, when I signed that lease on the, on May thirtieth, twenty nineteen, to, to date, to date, I still do not have a, I'm, 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 I'm like a squatter. I don't have a valid lease. But anyway, just one of the things I'd like to say. And um also, I would like to um be awarded the voucher because I was denied because of the recertification package that Ms. Diallo didn't do. And um also, I'm suffering from leg injury, and I have to walk up, up and down three flights of stairs every, every day, and it's, it's a strain on my physical health as well as my mental health. All of this is a strain on my mental, physical, and emotional health. But um I submitted to Ms. Diallo in twenty twenty. Um, my doctor's doc notifications and stuff regarding that I need to be in an elevated building. I'm still here. So I just wanted, oh, and also, um, I'm about to finish, and I had a still, my still. My ceiling is collapsing in my bedroom. Hood came, they look, these legs ain't look, they're supposed to be sending a roofless, and I have nothing. So every time it rains, it rains in my bedroom. So I would like that issue to be um resolved as soon as possible because I don't want to go through all I went through in apartment twenty-one where my bathroom's still in.
Chairman.
Sorry? All right, so uh again, um, a motion to adjourn the meeting. Second?
Second.
The, the um meeting is adjourned for the second time now.
It sounds like.